On the mic's not on.
So any questions on the minutes? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion is passed five to zero. Hey, what the public comment? Diane, do you want to talk now or you want to wait till after some? Okay, I figured as much. Okay, that's the thing on our, we have the new old business, sorry, is discuss the comprehensive plan. Staff, you have anything?
Yes, so um. You've been given three things. One of them is uh. The new outline for the comprehensive plan and then the other two are two chapters. One of them is a newer one and the other one is. Just re-formatted and there's some new information there too. So I'll go over the outline first and then you can provide comments, then I'll move on to the chapters and go like that if that's okay.
Okay, anybody on the board have questions for the staff?
Okay, yeah, so I'll go outline.
Okay, so I have some questions or just. Just hold on, let me get to the page and it's just really more clerical stuff. On our page with that shows the age distribution by male and female.
Right.
If we could keep how it where it says male and female on the same one, we have it above and below and on the one it's side by side. So just keep that consistent the same way across. Okay, the next one is our pie charts above goals. If we could keep the things, if you notice for rent. What changes colors? We could keep everything the same color through all the pie charts. So if you're looking to see something, it's the same percentage across everything. And then just questions on our goals and strategies when we're talking about create a vacant property registry. How are we going to do that?
Well, there you can use, you know, as that to find out who the owner is and then. You know, ask people to either register, but that's something, you know, something to explore, you know, that. A strategy for that could be, could be a variety of things, but you can definitely use that to find out the owner. That's public information and then we can do an inventory of all the houses. And call about that.
And the the next one is the rehabilitation because we have so many rental units that need rehabilitated. Are. We gonna work with the owners to get them grants or even enforce code?
I would say both, yeah, yeah. Our code does tell it like, you know, if if the commissioners or the mayor find a building hazardous, they can take actions so. And there are grants available for especially the sustainable communities area.
Yeah, like for windows and.
Right, yeah, we have the community legacy grant, but there's also, there's this one. Grant called project restore and you can buy the property from the owner and, you know, rehab it and stuff like that.
That's like I want to hear.
Yeah.
And so the the other one in there is streamline the process. You know me, I'm all about making it a lot easier. How are we going to streamline the process or what are we going to do? The streamline that.
For rehabilitation or?
Yeah, what we say is identify prioritize. I'm sorry. One in here where we said we were gonna. Trying to find the other line. Maybe I was looking at the town. Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the bottom influence. Yeah, so the bottom one, how we is goes establish a streamlined process to acquire rehabilitation, repurposing vacant buildings within the next two years. That's a pretty aggressive timeframe and what is it? We have six plus inches of towns laws and codes. What are we doing to streamline that process?
Right, I mean, that's something that needs to be explored. I mean, these are more.
Okay, I'm just, you know, because it caught me with a two year timeframe, that's a quick one.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's up my alley. I like streamlining and getting rid of paperwork.
Yes, yeah, it, this is also just a text, you know, as a planning commission, you can modify it however you like it, so. Yeah.
Okay, then any other members have questions?
I have a couple. Um, page. This part doesn't have a page number. It's about, it's after, let's see, following the table of contents, it's page one, two, three, four. Where it says vision statements in the middle of a page and then vision for a prosperous. Economy, that page. Okay, so it says there are partnerships, blah, 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 blah. And by investing in the community and creating hundreds of jobs. So I was just, I think we should change that to say and creating new jobs and not put. A numerical value on it.
Okay.
Yeah, probably like numerous. Rather than I'll tie it to a number.
And then page five, it says housing composition at the top. It says page five at the top of that one. I think I've asked before, but surplus units, are those vacancies?
Yes.
So those are vacant homes in Emmitsburg that are available for rent or sale?
Yes. Also, this data is from 2020 and it might be different now. Yeah, that's something we could fork on for the long term.
Trending in the wrong direction.
And then the the two pie charts just below that, the housing occupancy in 2020 and 2010. Are those identical? They look identical on the page, which would be surprising.
I can double check that and make sure that the numbers that they're labeled correctly with the percentage.
It's like a 1.4 difference between the two.
You can see a difference in.
That's 1.4 is the difference.
Okay, so maybe it is very close. And then page six, I had the same comment as Kevin to use the same colors across each pie chart. And that's all I had, I thought it was very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Page four. The male female. Distribution chart in the paragraph below. Third sentence from the bottom, it says despite these aging trends, the aging there is. This spell.
There's a spelling.
So as the planning commission, can we? Could we assign a different numerical value to the streamline, streamlining process objective here?
Absolutely.
Do we want to?
I think.
Change that to like five instead of two or some other?
I think that's a good point of discussion. I think we should control that. And have some input on it. What are the other board members think?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
We didn't put a timeframe on any of the other goals and objectives. So I would say take out the two year reference unless we're going to put a timeframe on every single objective.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense.
Two years of aggressive.
It is very aggressive.
I like the streamline, but it's an aggressive goal.
It never happened.
Well, that's the whole thing. If we put something in here that, you know, a timeframe and it doesn't happen, we need to go back to the public and explain why we didn't meet the timeframe. You know, and those are just awkward.
I say just take it out. How does everybody else feel?
Yeah, that's probably the smartest thing to do.
Yeah, so we'll just remove the, within the next two years out of it. Anything down on the end there?
No, you've covered everything, I think.
And we're good. Diane, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Come up and then.
Hello, Diane. Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. Hi, I'm just curious about a couple of things. I know that you reorganized the outline from the last draft. I was just curious where that suggested new outline came from. Was that something that was mandated by the state or?
Right, I mean, it's not a mandate by state, but going through their, like getting their guidance on it and making sure that all their required elements are hit. It's just, this just was a little more organized than what we had before. But if you suggest that we go with the older.
Oh, no, 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 I just, I just wondered how that process happened that that it was changed because it's changed pretty significantly from the last outline.
Recommended outline, you don't have to use it, but it's kind of like, oh, it's the chat GPT, it'll set it up for you.
Yeah, okay, okay, so that, so that's what happened. So are you working with state planners on this or county planners or?
So there is a, you know, there are planners who get assigned to different regions.
Right.
So there's one person who's assigned to Emmitsburg, you know, I am in communication with her, but she has sent me, you know, examples which I've been studying. And this is based on those examples, so.
Cool, no, I like it, I just, I just wanted to figure out how it happened. And then in the last one, I noticed that there were three chap, well. Implementation isn't very well outlined yet, but that's probably something that has to come about later after all the goals, objectives and strategies are. Are outlined and agreed upon. That whole thing about streamlining the process for getting rid of vacant buildings and things. You guys are going to have to. I think, I think this is how it works. You guys are going to have to make recommendations to the town council to modify the code.
Right, that that's correct.
So that, yeah, you're right, that could take, unfortunately, that could take a while.
If done correctly, we we can write it by code line and send it up. So there's no questions of men line six, paragraph three to say this.
Due to the fact that it will help us meet our strategic goal of blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I mean, if you tie it all in together.
That and then we're just also hand tied by some of the county's regulations. Properties, so we can take what we can do here and streamline it. I mean, you've known me long enough. If I can streamline it, I'm going to streamline it.
Which, which does make sense, yeah. Now. And maybe it was in here and maybe I just missed it, but. What's the next step in terms of the public participation? Is this, are the goals, strategies and what what's going to be shared with the public from from now on?
So this is shared with the public as, you know, part of the agenda.
Well. There are a million people here. I mean, I'm just saying.
And it's online, you know, are we going out door to door? No, have I gone out and talked to a couple of businesses about and then said, what do you think? Especially, you know, the business section in here. But outside of that, there's, you know, there's the meetings, publics have always invited to the meetings. There's then the council meetings above that that'll discuss it. It's online, so people can come back online and make comments. All of our emails are on the town's website, so I know I get emails asking questions. I can't say, I would assume you get emails all the time.
About the comp plan?
Well, about the comp plan or what's going on or, you know, I've got questions about people really concerned about the environment and what are you doing about water and?
Okay, I I just wondered if there had been, I I know when when we did it before and not that that's the end all and be all. But we actually did a public meeting where we had the restaurants in town. Provide food and then the public got to come in and look at the strategies and goals. They were up on boards and then they also could judge which food was best. So there was a little bit of competition and.
And we had the meetings where people, you know, could put their suggestions up on the boards and we discussed as a group and with the community those. And we had three, three of those, you know, like. Yeah, the public workshops to try to get that. And then we had the small committee that the mayor established to go out and, you know, talk and get that feedback from people. We're we're kind of stuck, you can invite people to it, you can go to some of it and it's up to the public. I'm sure you remember when the meeting, town hall meetings, the room was full and you couldn't.
Oh, yeah, you had to stand on the sidewalk.
And now there's nobody there.
Yeah.
So it's, we can reach out, like, I think we put it online and, you know, keep. Enforcing the community that, hey, here's this Yamitsburg website, it has all our administration about events and everything else going on. And, you know, everything's there, you know, you comment so because everybody's emails and everything's there.
I just didn't know if there was any organized plan to do anything else.
Yeah, not outside of the workshops that have already occurred. And I think, you know, members of the small committee are probably still walking around talking and everything. But outside of that, there's nothing else in the plan that I know of.
No, well, we are thinking about like presenting it to the board in the October meeting just to give them an update, like, you know, this is what we've been working on. And I mean, that's one way people will hear about it if they're watching the meeting or coming at the meeting. And and there will be a 60 day public review period. I know we had anticipated finishing it by the end of this year, but that's very unlikely given how far we've gotten. But that that's like a mandatory part of the comp plan, yeah.
Yeah, that's the federal mandate.
Okay, okay, I was, I was just curious because some people might be really interested in some of these strategies and goals.
I know.
You know, particularly the larger organizations like N E T C and like Mount St. Aries. So, but that small committee is still there, right?
Yes, it's still there. It it is officially functional to the end of the year. It was the approval was, so we had to leave end of the year as official representatives of the town.
Okay, so.
Can I respond to that last question?
Yeah.
Have we started chapter 10 implement implementation? Have we started writing that yet?
No.
No, okay. So I was, what I was thinking as you were discussing that is, you know, we had those three sessions. And I felt they were really well attended and that everybody really participated in the discussions and the board, you know, writing their thoughts on the. On the, on the boards that were that were hung up. So if we do write the implementation section, which is going to take into account all of those goals that were discussed and identified by the public for the most part. Would it be helpful to have another work session? Just to take a look at where we are, like, here's the input and here's what we've done with it. And these are the objectives going forward and the strategies to meet the goals that were identified by the public. Like if, I guess if I came to a workshop and I had a lot of ideas that I threw out there. It would be useful to kind of, you know, bring it back around to say, you know, how did the town take that information? And did they address it and how are they going to implement it? If at all.
Right.
So would it be useful to have another workshop to kind of bring it back together?
So what would be if we wouldn't do that? What type of timeframe and opening do we have in the town's schedule right now? Instead of, we're starting to head into the holiday season and timing with everything else.
So Maryland, you know, their land use law says that, you know, the planning commission has to decide whether to update a comprehensive plan every 10 years. So we don't have to adopt it by 2025, like, I mean, we do, we can do like in the middle of the year or something like that. Doesn't have to be like the first month of the year or anything like that. So it's really up to you to decide when you would like to hold it. That's something we can figure out as we go along.
The other members of the board think, you know, having another meeting where we go over the the goals and the objectives and get feedback from. You know, anybody that would attend.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for those, their ideas to come to fruition. How long do you think it will be until you get to chapter 10? To even begin writing it in terms of scheduling something into a public workshop?
Um, October, sounds good, yeah.
You think it'll be that quick?
I believe so.
What you saying, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said October.
October.
Yeah, end of October, yeah.
End of October.
Yeah.
So is it likely that? Is a November or December public workshop really viable?
It would have to be probably January.
January, yeah.
Okay.
And so let's shoot to try to get that and just try to pencil in something mid-January. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Walbrecker or the slings that she brought up?
I got a comment about you talking about vacant properties, right?
Well, that's one of the sections we had about vacant properties.
Have they ever considered the town doing what the city of Frederick has done?
No, so when it comes to you get vacant properties, the town has rules and the county has rules. So like if you wanted to condemn a property, that's under the county. So that's, you can take certain things here and say, hey, you have to fix it up, but you can't take it away from an owner. The town doesn't have that.
They've probably done that in Frederick.
Yeah, well, Frederick has a hard time, there's properties, I know they've been trying to condemn for 25 years.
Yeah, this one's been empty in 2001, I think they said.
Yeah. So it it's not an easy process. The town has tried it on properties here recently. It was brutal, it was long and it was unsuccessful.
It cost a lot of money, right?
Attorneys. Okay, any other from what Ms. Walbrecker said or questions for her or from the topic she brought up that you have questions or concerns about? Okay. Valerie?
No, not for Mrs. Walbrecker.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Okay, so go over from everything we've discussed tonight. Is there anything else people have a comment or want to change on the plan as presented currently? Or where you think we need to go or have concerns?
Um, I guess I have a statement kind of question. You know, we talked before about the disaster relief part of the plan. And I learned that we do in fact have an emergency preparedness and disaster relief plan. Good to know, we have that. So we may want to put in here somewhere as part of our goals to update that. And I think, I think we decided it has to be updated like every four years. So maybe we should put that as part of our our goals, some, I don't know where, what chapter would fit in currently that. That we're going to look at that and update it.
Yeah, it was about three, four years ago, we did that plan.
It was, was it 2018?
No, it was after that.
2020?
Yeah, that's why I said, I think like four years ago.
Four years. Yeah, I didn't.
Because that was when they did the redrawing of all the flood plains and it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa. We have creeping flood plains in the town.
2018. Diane, did you want to say anything else about the emergency preparedness plan? I know you had brought it up initially as something to look at and possibly include in our plan. Well. Or what were your thoughts at that time?
I I was actually talking about a disaster recovery plan, which is slightly different than an emergency management preparedness plan. There's some elements that are similar, but. I knew Denise, who was one of our commissioners a long time ago, was tasked to work on this, but I I haven't seen it. So is it online?
No, I don't think it's online. I remember we worked at it and I know if you ask, I think Kathy could give you a copy of it.
But it's a planning commission product?
No, 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 no.
Okay. It's a town product.
It's a town, planning commission didn't do it.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like the two would kind of go hand in hand, emergency preparedness and how do you relate or, you know, react to disasters.
Right, how do you recover from a disaster?
Exactly.
Yeah, I.
Steps that we would have to take, so maybe it should be part of the other plan or at least a supplement to it. But yeah, we can look into that.
So just ask Kathy.
Yes, she should be able to get it for you, I would think.
Or I can ask on Thursday when I'm in the office.
Perfect, yeah, if you would let me know, Valerie, that would be great. Okay, Valerie will ask. Okay. Thanks.
Last chance for comments or questions.
I think Nagila had some comments.
Oh, okay, I mean, I had one question, well. So the last page of. Uh, the third chapter, I guess. It says monitoring and evaluation on page eight. So. That's part of implementation, so would it makes make more sense to have an implementation component in every chapter? Or just have one big one at the end?
I would for a big one at the end, but. I think as we could roll some of the things, you know, into one piece rather than constantly repeating it as we go along.
That will, everybody knows where to go to look for it.
Yeah.
Got scattered across different chapters.
Right, so many of the things, well, so many of things interact with each other. By having it at the end, you can address those interactions and clean them all up rather than saying, oh, see this section then and see that section. That's my feeling, but. What is the board's feeling when it comes down to the evaluation, how we're going to monitor all this? Would you like to see it by each section and you think it should go in the back?
At the end, like you said, sounds better.
I think it'll depend on the amount of information we have in chapter 10. Do you think it will becoming overwhelming amount of information in one chapter?
I think so, and then. Well, it doesn't really have to be overwhelming, yeah, yeah. But I I just wasn't sure whether to, whether it would flow better if it was in each chapter versus just one big one at the end.
That's what, this is the 2015 plan, I'm looking to see what they get then.
I like having it at the end, but then as I'm looking at the table of contents, each chapter. Beginning, I guess with chapter three, has goals, objectives and strategies at the end of each chapter. at the end of each chapter. So in, in that case, it would make sense to add the implementation to that strategy page. Like here's the goal and objective strategy, how are we going to implement it altogether? Or we'd have to take everything and move everything to the end, which doesn't make sense. Do we see how each chapter has goals, objectives?
What's the timeline? We're looking to have like chapter 10 and everything done. Are we looking December?
October, end of October is my goal, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we, when we have all of that, circle back? And then take a look and make the decision then where it is, once we have everything in place.
See what it looks like.
Yeah.
One more. Sorry, uh, this is about the formatting. You see, one of them is a landscape outline and the other one's portrait mode. So do you have any preference for that?
I prefer it in landscape when you're dealing with numbers like that, because it just gives them more space to spread out.
For the goals or the whole document?
Whole document.
Like mine is more concerned about like where we have all the charts. If you were to switch these charts over from landscape, I think you'd lose a lot of the readable information. It was completely different.
Yeah, I was going to see if it was, if it went back and forth.
Yeah, now, it, it's so different than what we have now.
Does it do portrait the entire time in that one?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, you could use landscape, but then the information that we have in portrait right now could be switched to landscape and like, you know, set up differently to be able to be read better.
Yeah, the order map.
Be consistent.
Yeah, these maps are all landscape. Some of the figures are landscape, those popular, I'm, I'm sorry, portrait, the, where it says male, female, those charts are all portrait. I mean, for a document, I prefer portrait. That's just me, because it's, it, it's a document.
I, I mean, and there's nothing saying you can't have both. I mean, my concern, you know, the general, I'd rather, when you're reading portrait, when it comes to charts and tables, I think landscape is much better for the format for those. I, you know, corporate America will use landscape for charts. If somebody presented me in business charts that weren't in landscape, that I had a squint to figure out the numbers, it wouldn't be a good day for you.
Yeah, I would say maps and charts, definitely landscape, but otherwise portrait, because it's, it's a document.
No.
That's just my personal opinion.
No, I don't disagree with that. I mean, you can back and forth and they did, you know, looking at the 2015 plan, they flipped back and forth. You know, because if I look at all the maps and charts, again, they're landscape, all the actual, you know, statements are portrait. So there's, you know, we can do that also. I mean, that's would be my preference. I just have a strong feeling about putting charts in portrait. Does anybody else want to make a comment and tell me I'm wrong? Okay, so I think we want to go with the general text and portrait, the, the charts and everything will go in landscape. Okay. Closing questions, comments? This is your chance.
I got a comment. You look at the charts, we're going from left to right. We always have everything on the left that's in most current. Why wouldn't it go the other way? Why wouldn't you have 2,000 here and go that way?
Statistically, you've put the newest from the corner of your page, which is the left, and then you run backwards in time.
I think, nah, I don't agree with it, but that's all right.
Yeah, that's statistically, that's generally accounting.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, that's a legitimate question. I don't. So anybody got anything else? Okay. Hearing that, the time is now 7:35. The Emmitsburg Planning Commission meeting is now closed.